...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, head for the prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Good morning, everyone. Okay, we have minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our public hearing on October 25th in our regular meeting on October 25th as well.
Second.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Hearing none. We are moving on to a proclamation proclaiming November 2022 as Veterans and Military Families Month?
And Mr. Hudson's taking over here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, I thought you had to read it in first.
No, now I'll read it in.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, so I have the privilege of reading this resolution proclaiming November 2022 as Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas, we are reminded of the important role of the United States Armed Forces, that they have played in the history and development of our country and our state, and of our responsibility as Americans to support and honor the selfless service of our military and their families. Whereas, the veterans who have fought and continue to fight to defend our freedom and our liberties embody courage, patriotism, and loyalty, these patriots safeguard the values that keep our nation strong. And whereas, with hundreds of thousands of service members deployed overseas, recognizing their daily sacrifices made by active-duty guard and reserve military families have never been more important. This month and throughout the year, we acknowledge the tremendous sacrifices our military families make as they contend with the separation and make adjustments to new living situations and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that they hereby proclaim November 2022 to be Veterans and Military Families Month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, wishes to honor and express deep appreciation for these brave men and women and their families.
Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
And this is particularly important for me because I have a son who is a major in the Army and is currently stationed at Fort Lee down in Richmond, Virginia. So, I appreciate it. Ed, in your group, Joe?
Here, do you want to hold that in there?
I don't want to hold that in there. Wait, you can just hold it up. I am holding it.
That's what Phil. See you very good. Perfect. Ed, or Joe, Phil, or Victoria? Would you like to say anything?
I'm not good on the spot, Joe.
Sorry, let's come up to make our phone some way.
On behalf of the veterans of Medina County and their families, I thank the commissioners for the confirmation that it's important to remember veterans and their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you're all welcome to stay, or if you have more important things, you are welcome to go. Go in peace.
Okay, next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, Sanitary Engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is declaring the necessity to rehabilitate the State Route 18 elevated water storage tank and a silo located at the Hinckley wastewater treatment plant and to authorize the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for bids. And the second is rejecting the Waymouth Road elevated water storage tank rehabilitation bids and authorizing the sanitary engineer to rebid the project.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve, sorry.
Second.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. We're just gonna bobble it. We normally have an order, so, and Steve is there today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, next up, we have Scott Miller, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
I have two resolutions for you today. First resolution is authorizing advertisement for bids for adult probation for the drug testing electronic monitoring services. And the second resolution is authorizing an agreement with Step CG. This is for the provision of managed services. This is for a two-month period beginning November 1st in an amount of $26,615.70.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, Holly Muir, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have four new hires, one in transit, one in IT, one at Job and Family Services, and one in sanitary, 14 rate increases, six in sanitary, one in maintenance, one in office for older adults, four at Job and Family Services, and two in building. One lateral change to Job and Family Services, five leave of absence, three in sanitary, and two in transit, one return from leave at Job and Family Services, and two resignations in transit.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have nine resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one's amending the 2022 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. Second is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various Medina County offices. Third is approving a donation of a TOPAZ Freedon Scientific Desk Magnifier from the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities to a student from Buckeye Schools. Fourth is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The fifth is approving amendment number two to the agreement with Airmark Correctional Services Incorporated. This is for food services at the Medina County Home. The sixth is the approval of an agreement for fiscal agent services between Medina County and the Medina County Family First Council Early Intervention. Seventh is amending the Compensation Plan Administration and Point Factor Manual. We're calling this version 4.03 for Medina County employees. Eighth is allowing expenses of county officials. And the ninth is approving claims for the weak in the amount of $2,562,708.21.
Motion to approve the nine resolutions.
Second, discussion? Roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, department updates. We have Denise Testa from Planning Services.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Denise.
How are you? Good. So, we have our November Planning Commission meeting. We are reviewing a MAP amendment and a preliminary plan extension, and also presenting some fair housing information as well. For our December meeting, we're looking at one major and one text amendment. So, it's kind of tapering off here at the end of the year. Still continuing to schedule our educational workshops, so we've received some dates, and we're reviewing those for probably mid to end of November. And then regarding our community development block grants, the Lodi Fountain Repair is continuing. We have scheduled the bid opening on November 3rd, which is this Thursday. We did send out to the pool contractors and have been working, trying to get the word out that the bids are available, the bid package is available. We did receive some...
How many bid packages have gone out?
Well, we posted online in the Gazette.
So, they just go online and pick them up?
Right. And then we sent out, I believe, between 85 and 90 emails to companies that we felt were a good, a potential good match. And again, it was an announcement of advertisement, so it was more or less for information. We did receive a couple of phone calls from that. So, we are cautiously optimistic. The playground equipment or the playground project in Lodi is also continuing, and that is to be completed in February of 2023. So, we're very excited. We've been working with Lodi, and they've picked out their color, which is a really nice color for their playground. The Montville Township Cobblestone Park Pathway Phase 3, that contract was awarded last week. So, we're very excited that that is moving forward as well. We are currently working for, on the environmental reviews for the 2022 to 2024 cycle to get those out as early as possible. So, even though we haven't received official word that we've received that funding, we're trying to get ahead of that award. So, we are anticipating that within the next couple of weeks. The Lodi Critical Infrastructure application that we submitted, that is the bridge replacement in their park, we did receive $492,000 for that project. So, that will start moving quickly as well. The Lafayette Critical Infrastructure Phase 2 will be completed in 2023. So, obviously, the culvert and the main drive are already complete. For the subdivision regulations work group, we are submitting a revised timeline for that. So, in order to receive some information that we need, we needed to create a revised timeline for that. But that is still continuing to move forward. Are there any questions?
So, is Euclid Drive done in Chippewa?
That is the main, so the paving is main drive. So, you go up the main drive, hit the culvert sack, and then go...
And then it goes under Euclid?
I think it's all main drive.
It was called the main drive project.
Right. So, but it goes, the paving is going to go up to the bridge, and then after the bridge, it is private.
Right. So, is the bridge, the culvert done?
The culvert is done. You can actually drive across the culvert without any worries. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next, we have Laura Toth for Office for Older Adults.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. I'm happy to report that we had a wonderful October. We started out the month with our strategic planning on the 5th, which I told you about. I'm continuing to work on the report, and it will be ready for our open house, which is on November 14th. So, I'll hand those out. I know I sent you flyers, but I'll hand them out again. And then I put a stack of these at the commissioners at your desk, front desk out there, and we'll be passing them around. So, we have been in that building 40 years. So, we just want to celebrate and show people what we've done, both physically and programmatically, and what we have planned along with our strategic plan. So, it should be a really nice event, and that is on Monday, the 14th. We also held our first annual Oktoberfest. Commissioner Hudson was there. It was wonderful. It was very, very, very well attended.
It was, yes.
It wasn't busy.
Good thing the fire marshal didn't attend.
I believe, I loved your line. I used it. Commissioner Hambley said, "Well, how many people are allowed in that room?" And you said, "A couple more than one," or anything like that. But we were boundaries of capacity. We had 146 people and a band in that room. Everybody had them with dancing, lunch vendors, and other activities. We're already planning for Oktoberfest 3, but we are looking for a new venue. We're gonna, you know, go out to a little larger. So, it was a really good time. This past weekend celebrations, they were alive and well in Brunswick and Medina. Last Thursday, the Hocus Pocus to seniors at the Brunswick Rec. There were about 60 people in attendance. And last, we had a Halloween party at the Medina Center with about 70 attendees. Both part costume contests, seniors and staff participated. We all dressed up as birds. I was the queen of hearts. We, Western Reserve Monitoring, which is our audit, came in October 22nd. We received excellent marks in six out of seven, two tools. They have like seven tools. They had an issue. I've been told that can be a little hard to work with some. I like to call it headstrong. They had an issue with the security of our files, and some, the monitor and I were not agreeing on how our files were secured. The rule says a secure area, and she interpreted that as a file cabinets and did that as a locked room. So, we went back and forth and kind of disagreed, and I appealed to her supervisor, who at the time of the monitoring was, and she said that that is a fine explanation. Just put it, you know, as a corrective action. So, I'm excited about that because new filing cabinets for all those files would cost about $1,000. These file cabinets are older, but the locks are not. So, that was her issue. Not her issue. It was just interpretation rule. So, that all worked out. The other where there was a bit of an issue was transit. And we subcontract our transit grant, you know, Medina County Transit provides all their transit. We don't provide. And so, Transit has to provide records typically. They go out and look at all Transit records, but she chose not to do that. So, there was a litany of she had to see that Transit has to provide. So, we're hoping to iron that out. Shannon's been just great to work with, as has Amanda, and I have no doubt that everything will be November when it's due, and life will go on. Transportation, one last thing I wanted to hit on. I took a look at how many rides we're providing per year because it had declined during the pandemic. So, I went back to 2018, and for the whole year, we provided 8,462 grant-funded rides. In 2020, that went down to 5823. So, you can see the impact of the pandemic. And then 2021, it was 5638. So, it was, but the reason I looked at it is because so far to date in 2022, 5258. So, we're at 5,000 range. So, I'm intent, we'll hit 6,500 rides, which is pretty exciting because, you know, when something stays that low for the time, I wasn't sure, you know, when or if it would bound. It was very reassuring that those rides would be in the 6,400 range. And I know Shannon's working on a new Transit. So, all these stats are probably gonna go when we start talking about bill under rides in the future. At least, overall, Transit rides are coming back, and more seniors are feeling safe and secure and getting out there and using the Transit system, which is what we want.
So, to that point, I was at the Suprema event, a senior event on Friday.
It was great.
From Wadsworth.
Very well attended.
I'll bet you there were five hundred people.
Oh, my gosh, it was awesome. Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. Yes, their open house.
And I had a number of folks come up to me and tell me either suggestions for Transit, to expand Transit services particularly in Wadsworth, or to complement our Transit services.
That's great. And Wadsworth, there's a lot of, I think, trepidation, anxiety because with seniors, because it's changing. That's the pilot program. I was just like, "You're gonna have a ride. It's just, you're gonna have a ride." That's, you know, and that's what they want. Just know you're gonna have a ride. It's gonna work out.
Right.
So, that's good that they were talking about it.
Right. It's obviously a concern, and most of them seem very pleased with the services.
Yeah. So, Friday was the Wadsworth Senior Expo. That's like their senior day. So, yeah, it was good.
It was really wonderful event.
Yeah, it was a nice event. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, now time for public comment. Does anybody have any, Mr. Frederick?
Mark, we've missed you. Like a hole in the head. Been a while. You get rusty.
Name and address?
Mark Frederick, 6146 West Smith Road, Medina, Ohio, United States of America, continent North America, planet Earth, Milky Way, solar system, even the Martians can find me, and 6112 West Smith, next door also. Been a while. Your luck ran out. A long time no seat. It's too bad the vets all split. We all owe them a good speech of gratitude, especially me for providing me the right to stand here and speak out. I'd like to say there's been a Frederick in every skirmish and war America's had since grandpa got off the boat and trying to join up on our side for World War I. My nephew's currently a federal agent serving America. You know what? Doesn't take, oh, forgot something. Doesn't take much to find something wrong with government. And I don't have to look too hard to find it. But I guess it finds me. Gotta make sure I get my time. I had a problem with the Medina County Dog Shelter. I don't know if you know it, but I've been doing a lot of things in my life. Been raising American Kennel Club registered dogs for almost 70 years. The last 40 have been German Shepherds, good ones. Because at my age pushing 70, if I gotta go out there and shovel those little brown mountains, guarantee it's gonna come out of a good dog. Some of mine are related to Deputy Potter out of Medina Sheriff's Department. I don't want to say how many generations ago. If you look at the front of a Bill Jack Dog Biscuit, there's a little black and tan German Shepherd on the front. That was Bill Kelly's dog. It's related to my Heidi. They're all long gone after 40 years. The point being, I had a problem, or I should say, the Medina County Dog Warden had a problem with me. It's not hard to happen. And Holly, maybe you need to talk to some of the employees here in this county, and you guys too. I'll tell you about it. I had somebody drop off a dog at my place. It was my dog. I caught it. I don't want those stray dogs running around my joint, bringing parvo and disease, possibly infecting my animals. So, I caught it. Doesn't take much. They're pretty smart. They come to you. I took it to the dog pound. The dog catchers went nuts. They called me a liar. They said it was my dog. And they had proof because the dog of most of mine have a chip in them. My dog runs away, we know it's mine. You scan like a can of peas, and you know it belongs to me. Except for one little problem. This dog wasn't mine. Hudson, you're running for judge. You know the law, right? You better go down there and teach that dog catcher that when you sell something, it's not yours no more. When I sold that dog, probably five years ago, and I didn't keep records on it because I didn't sell it with full American Kennel Club registration. I'm not required to. So, you bought a good dog. Somebody must've got tired of it and dumped it back at my place. But because the chip said it was my dog, they wrote me three tickets. Dog got thrown out of court. It was all nonsense, as I told the prosecutor, "Dog, you know what, four-letter word." Anyhow, I'm gonna raise good German Shepherds, and we need to let the county dog catchers and wardens get some of this information straight. One of the idiots down there, and I'm thinking, maybe, Holly, I don't know if this is the county's attempt to hire the mentally disabled or idiots or what.
Mr. Frederick?
But this is what I'm finding to be the case. When they call me a liar, that's pretty rough. Nicole Casper said that under oath. They owe me an apology minimum, and I'm probably gonna check into some legal action for a couple $10 million lawsuits against the county for employees that go after citizens with that kind of statement. That's not nice. And too bad Steve's not here because he's an old teacher like I am. He better go down there and teach the dog catchers a few things, too. Like I said, I've been raising dogs for about 70 years. The last 40 German Shepherds, good ones. I've always had a Medina Kennel license. Usually, I'm the first one in here, K1. That's my number. They know who I am. They know my dog. Somehow, everybody in the county knows me. I don't know. But like I said, I've bred and sold good dogs. I'm not gonna waste my time with junk. I've gotten phone calls, and I hope they don't start crying because the phone call says, "Thank you for selling me that dog." "Are you welcome?" "No, you don't understand. That dog saved my life. That dog saved my kids." And if I ever thought about getting rid of dogs, that was my answer. God wants me to have them. That's why I keep them. When I'm dead rotten and forgotten, the dogs will still be around. Anyhow, I'd like to say the Hambley has to go down there and teach the Dog Warden, and especially about calling citizen a liar. That's what Nicole said. And I don't know if you can get a copy of the Medina Municipal Magistrate Lowry's proceedings. That was Friday, a couple days ago. That upset me to put mildly. How about you like if I called you a liar? Not nice, especially when an idiot doesn't know what she's talking about. Also, public records request. On June 27th, one of the dog catchers down there told me that they don't get a penny from the county. Well, I don't have idiot tattooed up there because I don't believe it. So, I'm gonna ask for public records requests. I want the wages of every employee with the dog kennel, dog county kennel, whatever you wanna call it, the shelter. I call it a rat hole, but that's my opinion. I want the total annual cost for running that, the vehicles, the maintenance, the fuel, everything. Don't worry, Scott, you'll be getting a public record request out of that. That really upset me. Dick and I'm an idiot telling me they don't get a penny out of it. And finally, I'd like to know why. There's so many people hiding in there behind a locked door. You can't get in. You pound on the door, try to get in, and there's nobody answering. It's like kicking over an ant hill. All these ants and rats come running out of there. You don't know how many are hiding back there. Maybe I should get a job there. But trouble is, I'm not somebody's sister, brother, uncle, cousin, mother. But an easy cushy job. It probably benefits too, I'll bet. That's why I wanted to see what the public records are and the cost of running that. Well, all I'm gonna say is, you guys know from now on, you never want to aggravate a skunk. And to screw around aggravating me is like grabbing a skunk by the tail. Not smart. Thank you.
I guess everybody is allowed their opinion. I will say that the funding for the animal shelter is through licenses. The statement that the animal shelter gets no funding through the County General Fund is accurate. It's licenses and donations. I know that the employees at the animal shelter are extremely dedicated to their jobs. They do what they need to do to enforce the ORC. They're good employees, and I appreciate them very much. And I think that Mr. Frederick's comments were definitely out of line. Again, there's a way to be civil and a way to, you know, get your point across without being disrespectful. You know, I don't know what happened at court. I don't know what was said. But I just wanted to, again, support the employees at the animal shelter. And we will get you all the information that you want, Mr. Frederick. You know, we have nothing to hide. So, we will make sure that we get you the financial records. We'll get you the salaries. Just go ahead and make a list of what you want, and we'll make sure that you get that.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
My name is Stan Sheets, 342 East Liberty Street, Medina, retired attorney and private property advocate. I have two subjects today, about three minutes each potentially. I've tried not to abuse that whatsoever. First is more of an announcement in a letter I'd like to read to you that came to me from the Medina County Historical Society. Dear Mr. Sheets, on behalf of the Board of the Medina County Historical Society and the membership, we sincerely thank you for your generous gift. The title research, etc., is a tremendous addition to our collection. We get so many inquiries about the history of homes and buildings in Medina County, and this extensive collection will be an excellent tool for property research and genealogy. We certainly appreciate you thinking of us and making the effort to transport all of the materials to the McDowell Phillips House. We plan to create a database with information for easy access. It will take some time, but will be well worth it. We are calling it the Sheets Collection, but we'll also reference all the attorneys who did the work over the years. What I actually did was donate my title plant from Lawyer's Title with records of over 75 years from Pelton, Pelton, and Sheets, as well as Lawyer's Title Insurance Corporation. I also had acquired all of the records of Larrabee and Cooper and their title company, Cleveland Title, all of Oberholzer and Oberholzer and their title company, Minnesota Title, all of Lauren Neeper's records and Seaway Title, as well as Whitfield and Gilbert, who were also Lawyer's Title agents for years. And I acquired those all during 1970s and 1980s and merged them into my company. At that time, we had to do 100-year searches for title examinations. So, it has the history of all the properties, all the easements, all the rights of ways, etc., of mall to... of all the properties, all the easements, all the rights of ways, et cetera, of a multitude of properties throughout the entire county. Then it was shortened to fifty years, now it's down to thirty-five years, so the value wasn't there for a sale. So I donated thirty-two drawers of four drawer files and had it delivered to the, and they're doing the indexing, et cetera. You know, and they're gonna classify which areas make the most sense to do, but I just wanted you all to be aware of it for that act.
How many parcels, Stan? Do you have any idea how many? So there's like seventy-seven thousand parcels in the county? Does that sound right? Eighty-two thousand?
Probably in the thirty, thirty-five, because thirty-two file drawers full of title examinations and/or policies attached to them, and, and I didn't want to see it destroyed. It was the handiwork of all these real estate specialists in Medina County, including myself. So I'm happy to have donated it, and I'm pleased that they were, were willing to accept it. So that was my first subject. The second subject dealt with Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I had a meeting with Steve Hamley and Kathy, I can never say your last name back, thank you, on the twenty-fourth, a Monday, before the meeting on Tuesday. I anticipated Steve to say a few more things at that meeting. He spoke in what I would call glittering generalities about the reorganization of the Convention and Visitors Bureau within or adjacent to the Medina County Economic Development Corporation. I have fifty-seven years of experience in the hotel industry with five hotels. I also chartered jets, I chartered buses, I was in the travel business for years and years, and I know the lodging industry pays the primary bed tax. And my concern was with this potential association and the fact that a new Articles of Incorporation was filed in August of this year, unbeknownst to a lot of the stakeholders and the members, and that the Code of Regulations was dramatically changed from a nine-member voting board that had stakeholders involved to a three-member board consisting of Kathy Bethany and a person yet to be appointed, with absolutely no stakeholder representation at this time. At that meeting on Monday with Kathy and Steve, I received some assurances that this was solely temporary, but the Code of Regulations and the articles only show this. There was no timeline set up for a permanent director to be hired with at least five to ten years' experience, either in hospitality industry and/or in the Convention and Visitors Bureau industry or, or travel industry, and there was no timeline for the expansion of the Board of Directors. Kathy mentioned it may potentially be expanded to seven to nine, to as many as eleven members, but again, there was no commitment whatsoever in relation to stakeholders voting versus simply being an advisory committee. My concern is, I know what hotels pay in that lodging tax. I owned three hotels. My average, when I owned those hotels, was anywhere from twenty-five to thirty thousand every single year that I owned them, and the average on many of the hotels, it all relates to their occupancy itself. I just want to be certain that stakeholders do have a voice in how this Convention and Business Bureau is set up, and in the decision-making process in relation to staffing, the permanent director, the location of this, the, the facility, because now we're hearing that it may not, it's coming off the square, it's going into potentially office space on a second floor or in another, or an office building, but where there won't be any presence on the square or, or in a building, and we're talking, and talking about hours that would be much shorter than what they had been previously. Right now, I think we're using solely interns between four and seven in the evening with no presence during the day. So it was just a concern that I've expressed, I've also expressed this concern with the Ohio Department of Tourism, with the Ohio Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I forwarded the Code of Regulations to them, which they have grave concerns about also the fact that there's no stakeholders involved in the Board of Directions and the decision-making. And I thank you for the opportunity to address these things. I, I was hoping Steve would be here, that he might further edify this, but I'm hoping he will in the future, and that some timelines will be set for these things to be put in place. I thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stan. And we are having further conversations, so it's, it is a developing issue.
Understood. God bless. Thank you. I hope that was somewhat respectful.
Okay, so we are going to move on to discussion sessions. Scott, do you have anything?
Just a couple of updates. I spoke to the Historical Society, I think it was yesterday, yesterday or Friday, and the bond, the war bond building at the hospital, the cement pad is laid, it's ready to go. We're just waiting on the ground to harden so we can get a flatbed truck in there to get it moved up. I know that Brian is working on maybe some alternate solutions of getting it moved from the hospital property to their location. So that is moving forward. The courthouse, we are currently at about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars still in, in our contingency, but there's about another seven hundred thousand dollars contingency that Gilbein has and that the contractors have. So we are doing very well. We are still on schedule, furniture is being delivered next week, and they will start installing furniture on the second floor, I believe. So I think it's gonna go second, first, or second, third, first, fourth? Something like that.
Second, second's first, yeah, first off, but second's first, and then whether it's third, and then one, and then four, that's kinda probably how it's coming out. So two, three, one, four.
Yeah, so, so it is moving forward. We expect that the courts will be hopefully fully operational in that building in January. We will get them moved. We met with the, well, I met with Judge Shaffer yesterday, as far as specifically what offices she'll be occupying, and have a meeting set up with the courts on Thursday to talk about the coordination of the move. The movers will be there, and we will go ahead and get that organized.
Are we doing like one department at a time, or is it everybody all at once?
It'll be one department at a time.
Okay.
But we'll get that coordinated and, and we'll get that, make sure that it coincides with their operations, and so that'll, that's Thursday.
I can't believe after all these years, we're at this point where we're-
Actually moving in?
Actually move in, it's really-
Yes, we are, so, so ahead.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Amy?
And, and Stan, I want to go back to you real quick. There's one comment that you made about hotels paying the tax, and you said twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. Just to clarify, hotels don't actually pay the tax, they remit the tax.
They just remit the tax.
Yes, because the tax is actually paid by the guest. The hotel collects it and just then remits it to the county. So I, just one clarification.
And we also pay three percent to the village, or the township, or the city, because each of those has a three percent.
Right.
Our total tax bill is over twenty percent of our total revenue, with six and a half percent sales tax, and then all the other taxes for employees.
Right, but again, it, it is remitted, it's not necessarily paid, so, thank you.
But paid by the lodging industry, right.
It's collected by the lodging industry, right.
Laura, do you have anything? Do you hear me?
No.
I'm sorry.
What, are you giving Steve, you giving Steve a bye week?
I know. Denise? Economic? John? Okay, Bill?
I don't have any.
I don't either.
So we have a, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee and appointment of a public official.
Second. Hudson?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Okay, so, thank you, everybody. We'll come into adjourn after we're done with the executive session. Thank you so much. Hey, Laura.